Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Simsbury Board of Education. Today is October 8, 2013. And with that, I'm calling to order. And do we have anyone in the audience willing to address us in public audience? Seeing no one, we will move on to Board and Administrative Communications, and we'll start with Jacob.
All right, so the college visits are continuing on a daily basis at the high school. Between today and tomorrow, we have Boston College, the College of New Jersey, Northeastern, and Springfield College. There's a home football game Friday night against Conard at 7:00 PM. The Vegetarian Club is hosting some Vegetarian Awareness Month events, and Teen Chef USA and the Math League are about to start tonight.
Is this vegetarian club new?
No, I think it's been around for a while.
Oh, has it? Oh. Interesting. You gonna try some of the new ... Andres?
Yeah.
All right, Mike.
I'm good, thank you.
Chris.
I just want to remind members of the Board who are on the Curriculum Committee that our next meeting is Tuesday, the 29th of the month.
Good, thank you. Michael.
Just a quick update on the Personnel Negotiations Committee work that's going on this year, again, as everybody I think knows, is a year in which we negotiate the next contract with the Simsbury Education Association and the Simsbury Administrators Association. And those meetings are going on in earnest. We've had, I guess, counting meetings and pre-meetings, probably five meetings since we last, the Board last met, including last night's meeting. The first mediation session is with the S.E.A., and that's Thursday, and the next one is with the administrators, and that's next Wednesday, is that right? Next Wednesday or Thursday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And those will be, if past history is any guide, those will be long meetings. So, very productive, everybody's working together well, and we'll see where it goes from here, to keep you up to date.
Very good. I hope you catch a little bit of sleep in between, when possible.
I'm getting to know my fellow Board members more than I want to know.
Well, sleep is overrated, you'll get to rest after.
That's right.
Tara.
No, I wanted to just mention that Latimer Lane had their unbelievable turnout for the bike walk, ride to school, and Tooton's is tomorrow, so anyone in that district should be careful. But it's very exciting, and the weather's been so cooperative this year for that event, so it's worked out great. So, that's fun for the elementary schools.
Yeah, that's good.
And Central's still having their event on November 3rd for the 100-year anniversary.
Absolutely. Good. Erin.
Yes, just a reminder that next Wednesday is an early release day for students and for teachers. The focus will be on curriculum development, so teacher teams will come together to work on their grade level and/or content area curriculum. One of the first opportunities, because we've been focused on the teacher evaluation and writing our goals and objectives, so this will be an important day for that early release. Also, the PSAT and the SAT day is next Wednesday on the 16th, and I was at the high school this morning, and I believe they extended the signup day until tomorrow for PSAT and SAT, so if you haven't signed up, now's the time to do it before tomorrow. And I believe that we have at least 200 students signed up to take the SAT, seniors next, so it's really very productive and a wonderful opportunity for our students to participate in the SAT.
Is that number more than we've had in the past?
Yeah, I don't know the comparison.
Yes, it is.
It's only second year of doing it during the ...
It's only the second year.
It's definitely higher than last year. We had about 130 last year.
Okay. Really, that's good, that's ...
So, we're in, yeah.
So, they like the change to do it during the week.
Very popular.
Great.
All right. Sue.
You'll hear from more from me later.
Absolutely. Burke.
Right now. Two quick items, wanted to share that we were awarded two of the communications awards from CAE, an award for the Simsbury Spirit, the High School Newsletter, an honorable mention award, so kudos to Neil and Denise and the folks at the high school that work on that. And also, a pamphlet put together for our intervention efforts around SRBI, or Scientific Research-Based Interventions, that came from collaborative work with Betsy and Martha Hogan. So, we were pleased and wanted to share that information with you this evening. The other piece is, yesterday afternoon, we received a memo from the State of Connecticut, Commissioner Pryor. We've talked about the fact that there would be a waiver, an application for a waiver from the State Department of Education to the federal government. This letter describes that waiver application, and it'll impact us in two ways. One is on our testing options, our standardized testing options for this year. The other has some implications for decisions we need to make with teacher evaluation. So, we just got this, we're taking a look at it, and we will come back to the Board next time with a little more detailed information, but essentially, no surprises. We knew that we would be given the option this year to either participate in the traditional CAPT or CMT, or participate in a pilot for the new Smarter Balance assessments. We certainly, with our eye towards what we're doing with curriculum and instruction, would like to participate in the pilot, that'll also give us an opportunity to test our technology platform prior to going live with this. And if you remember, the whole thing is done online, so it's, we have a form we need to fill out and work with that way. The other piece is a little more complex, it has to do with teacher evaluation, the realization that the State Department won't have that kind of accountability data that they've had over the course of many years with the drop-off in CMT and CAPT. So, you know, they are asking the federal government that the 2014-15 school year be the first year that we use that S-BAC standardized data for what, I'm getting real technical here, but was 22% of that evaluation for teachers. And that's a position that I know we really agree with, because using it prior to that or using the pilot data, there's no benchmark, we have no idea how that would measure up, and to have to have conversations with teachers about performance relative to different data points, I don't think it's fair, so I'm pleased to see that they're providing the application and will keep you up to speed on that. But we'll have a little more detail on that next time around, but in case you do hear, that is out, it's causing a lot of conversation among superintendents and districts.
Right, because it is happening all through the state, all through the districts.
Yep.
Absolutely. And for the public, the S-BAC is, again, I know we use those acronyms.
Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium.
Consortium, right, right. Very good. All right. Jacob, want to tell us about Education Nation?
Absolutely. So, on Sunday, I had an opportunity to participate in the annual NBC News Education Nation Summit in the New York Public Library, and I was invited for the Student Town Hall, and there was about 150, maybe 200 students there from all over the country, as far away as California, Chicago, some closer from, in New York City. And they talked about all kinds of topics, there was school safety, college affordability, Common Core, all kinds of stuff, and we heard from Eric Schmidt, the Google Executive Chairman, David Coleman, the CEO of the College Board, and then there was some student panelists and students from all, you know, from elementary school all the way to post, you know, postgraduate college students. And there was some particular, the school safety discussion I thought was very meaningful and pretty eye-opening for me especially.
Great, great. And how'd you get selected for this?
The Association for Career and Technical Education, which is the parent organ, which is sort of a parent organization for the career and technical student organizations like FBLA, they got an invite, and so they passed it on to FBLA, and FBLA asked me if I'd go, so of course.
Great, it's quite an honor.
It was, it was a very special opportunity, I think, to be able to go to something like that.
That's great, that's great, very, very good, so. And there is a link to, Katie will put on a link.
Yeah, it's on the NBC News website, and the whole thing, it's two hours long, the whole show, but I, you know, I think the segment that I was in was about five, six minutes.
Were you able to stay and participate for the other speakers during the rest of the agenda for Education Nation?
No, well, the conference actually continued through today.
Right, right.
Those events are more geared towards, you know, they're sort of just professionals and governors, that kind of thing, major players in the education world, and then the media sort of covers it, so they're, or just live-streamed, I think.
Good, good. We'll look forward to hearing about that, sounds great, so. Good, and while you were Education Nation, I was participating yesterday at the Connecticut STEM Conference, I was invited at the Science Center, and it was very interesting, because three districts participate with University of Hartford and Hartford Hospital, and it was interesting, because a lot of the topics were about STEM, how integrate STEM into curricula, how to integrate STEM into, with Common Core, and also, the career, ready-to-career in college from STEM graduates and the process. So, it was very well-attended, a lot of teachers and educators were there, some very excellent speakers, and, you know, as we talked about, you know, Common Core red flags and green flags with STEM courses, and where we need to be in the next five, 10 years with our graduates that are leaving our districts and pursuing studies in higher ed, you know, for potential careers in STEM. So, it's every year, and this year, there was about 410ees that were there, and so it'll be nice next year, maybe we'll have Center couple of schools also as part of one of the districts, so. So, that's it, and Terry, yes, I was, Lisa and I last week did participate in the walk, it was a very nice day, and at the beginning, and Matt was there at the end, and Burke greeting the students, so it turned out well, and hopefully tomorrow will be a nice day. Good. All right, we'll move on to recommended actions. For Exhibit 1, approval of minutes from the September 24th meeting, do I hear a motion?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, motion passes. We are on to Exhibit 2, Personnel.
So, I just wanted to inform the Board that we have participated in a rigorous selection process, and Neil, feel free to chime in here if you would like, but we've appointed a new English Department Supervisor at the high school. So, her name is Georgia Roberts, she's going to be starting with us at the beginning of November, just to give her the school system that she'll be leaving some transition time. She has her BA from Mount Holyoke, her MA from UMass, and her sixth year at Quinnipiac. She comes to us with 14 years of experience, and we're very excited for her to join the leadership team at the high school.
Great, very good. And she started, she's ...
No, not until the beginning of November.
November, okay, very good. Do I hear a motion?
No.
We don't have a motion, right?
Just information.
No, sorry about that, thank you. All right, on to Information Reports. Exhibit 3, the October 1st enrollment report.
Sue will take care of this for us.
Okay, so as is very typical around this time, we share with you some of our enrollment numbers for our district, as well as projections, and how we fared, and what this is going to mean down the line for some decision-making. Later on in this evening, we will also have class size reports, elementary, which I will facilitate, and then we have administration from the middle school and high school to share class sizes, information from those particular areas. So, if you, we want to start looking at the comparison between October of 2012 and October 1st of 2013, you will see that overall, our district enrollment has declined with 171 students. You can look at the breakout, 113 through K through 6, and we'll get into a detailed slide showing where that actually happened, 21 student decrease at Henry James and a 37 student decrease at Simsbury High School. If you look at it in this table format, that 171 really presents a 3.8% decrease overall in our enrollment. When we look at the projections, a couple of highlights, this is the second year in a row that our kindergarten actual numbers have come in higher than what we projected. In this case, this year, 19 more than projected, and speaking with some of our constituents at Nezdech, they pointed this as a possible uptick in the economy, because, you know, you're getting more students than projected in this kindergarten class. Overall, though, we do have a 26 student decrease in our K-6 from the projections, and again, we really get these numbers from Nezdech, they ask us to furnish them with certain statistics, and from my office, and certainly, their projections were at 4,389. Again, our overall enrollment of 4,330, which is a difference of 59 students from the projections, and we'll get into more details about that in just a moment. This is how the projections, this is, again, the projections from the actual, and what the difference is between. So, you'll see, and which has been the case specifically with Terrifil and Central, we see student enrollment and not a lot of difference between the projected and the actuals, where we see the most difference in Simsbury High School, Henry James, and Squadron Line, our largest communities, where there might also be some variability. But we're going to continue to look at these projections versus actual. This is the first time we saw some net decrease in those actual projections, and that's something that we're going to be taking a look at with Nezdech, as we're giving them our numbers from our current enrollment, and we get the projections from next year, for next year, really seeing some patterings that we have to pay attention to. If you look at this by school, certainly, this is the elementary numbers, I alluded to the 113 before, and this is where the differences actually happen. You're seeing a large difference at Squadron Line, not surprising as compared to the others, as that is our largest school, but again, a smaller difference at Central and at Terrifil. One of the things we look at very closely is what we call our in-migration and our out-migration numbers, how many kids are registering new over the summer, and consequently, how many students withdrew. So, again, overall, we're looking at a net decrease of six here, and again, paying particular attention in the coming projections, factoring in these in-migrations and out-migration numbers. What we did see a little bit different from a typical pattern is that our in-migration net overall wasn't as high for our K through 6 as it has been in the past. It's really, our net was about 16 to the good, and that's a bit of a difference than we've seen in the past. So, again, when we're talking with Nezdech, when we're looking at their projections, we're going to be looking to see if we have to make any adjustments from those projected numbers. This table really shows the five-year historical enrollment trend from 2009 until present, October 1st of 2013. Overall, we have shown a reduction of 508 students, which basically represents a 10.5% decrease in our enrollment. Just as a reminder, as we're talking about declining enrollment, I think that it's really important to, just as a reminder to the Board, recognize the Facilities Enrollment Task Force work, and I didn't realize those checkmarks would be blinking in and out rather obnoxiously there, but it really emphasizes the point. So, this multi-year task force really looked at different options that we had. We know that this decline in enrollment is not a big surprise for us, we had heard, you know, the trends that are going to be happening over the next, the course of the 10 years, that we are going to be experiencing some decline, and we took a responsive look at what does that need to look like. And from that task force, the recommendation was made to really take a look at our modulators. So, here, you'll see from that timeline that the recommended removal date, specifically that we would start at Tooten Hills, and that actually happened over the summer, if you haven't had a chance to go out and take a look at the landscape now versus a couple of months ago, it's pretty impressive. Also, to be removed is the Latimer, was the Latimer Lane, the white modular, which is now nice and, it's actually still covered with hay at this point, because the grass is still growing where it was removed, but those are just good responsive decision-makings, decisions that we made. What we still have to continue to look at is examining this timeline, specifically at modular removal for Central and Latimer. As you see, Central is slated next, again, but what we had said is that we need to take a look at what our enrollment and actual numbers are, so we may need to take a deeper dive into that and see if that proposed timeline is really what we want to do. So, we will be reconvening that task force, as we had shared with you in the spring, sometime in this fall, to take a look at some of these numbers.
So, I would just add one piece to that, when we really took a look at that modular space, I think it was, I'll get the number close, but it was over 20,000 square feet, I think, across the district, with a capacity of 500 students. So, when you look at these significant declines, it is important to recognize that when the schools were much larger, you know, Tooton above 600, Latimer above 600, those with full utilization of all the modular units.
Just to give you a snapshot of our cohort sizes, our largest cohorts are in the 12th and the 9th grade, and you can see those numbers respectively. For next year, if we're looking at just matriculation alone, and that 12th grade leaving, and the incoming 8th grade, we're looking at a net of a decrease in 43 students just in that matriculation, so again, we'll have to look at that in light of the Nezdech projections. Our smallest cohorts remain kindergarten and 2nd grade, but again, just want to emphasize that that kindergarten cohort at 231 is 19 over what was projected, and again, that's a good sign. Our open choice program is currently at 139 students, this represents a slight uptick in our numbers, and that's pre-K through 12. We have seven preschool students who are also members of the choice program, so K through 12, we're looking at 132 students. Some more detailed information that you actually have in your written reports, but things I would like to highlight is just in regard to our part-time and full-time magnet and out-of-district programs. So, currently, we have 136 students in full-time programs outside of Simsbury, so you'll be able to see that in Page 6 of your actual report, where they're going. This represents an increase of seven students from last year, about 63% of those students are enrolled in K and pre-K programs, and again, for those specifics, you can take a look at Page 6. This represents a slight uptick of 73 students from last year. And in examining that data, what we did notice is we have a couple more pre-K students actually attending the aerospace magnet than we did last year, and seven more at the Greater Hartford Academy of Arts. So, that represents the majority of that uptick from last year, but these students, just as a reminder to the Board, they're not reflected in our October 1 report. Consequently, there are additional students who are in part-time magnets with us, the greatest number is 13 at the Academy of Performing Arts. These students, because they do spend part of the day with us here in Simsbury, they are reflected in our enrollment numbers. So, that is a very quick, but hopefully comprehensive overview of the October 1 enrollment report. Before we go into class size, though, I do want to offer to Board members, if you have any questions, to ask at this point.
I'll open up for questions.
Also.
Self-explanatory.
Good report.
One question, going back to elementary over here in Latimer, it just seemed to be the highest out of the elementary, oh, where is it, 21 kids withdrew this summer?
Mm-hmm, and we had 16 come in.
Yeah. I would've thought Squadron would've had more, but larger school, just.
You know, as I had mentioned, Lydia, it's hard to say with those, to look for predictable patterns in in-migration and out-migration, and we just haven't found too many. I think the only pattern that is just worth noting and looking at is, again, the decrease in the overall net K-6, and just something that we have to keep an eye on.
Well, I know we've had a lot of house sales in Latimer District, so that's been positive, but also with a lot of young children that have moved in, so that'll change.
Additional questions or comments at this point?
Thank you.
Also.
You're welcome. Oh, the fun continues.
I'm looking forward to it, I need more.
I'm actually going to invite Brian, Jeff, and Eileen to come up as we talk about class size in just a moment. Neil, you're more than welcome to come up, too. It's up to you. Yeah, right up here, please.
So, I would just, before we transition, add one thing, you know, last year, in our budget planning, I think we were very upfront and talked about the fact that we recognize a decline in enrollment, and when enrollment declines, there are a certain number of reductions we can make due to attrition that do not impact program and impact instruction negatively. And, you know, we'll certainly have to take a look at that. Again, there are certainly sections at the elementary level right now we can look at from a roll, and that's why we have our class size guidelines, we'll staff within our guidelines, but we will be able to reduce a certain number of sections, I think we need to be upfront about that, as we were last year in our budget, because we get those questions, and I think it's important that we're responsive to them.
So, to that point, let's take a look at the elementary class size report, and this slide really encapsulates the majority of the information here. If we look at the number of class sizes that exceed the range, we are in the same as far as numbers as we were last year. Those two classes are in a kindergarten class and a first-grade class, but we are happy that we have very few classes, 1.2% that exceed the Board-recommended range. And just as a reminder, the range is 18 to 22 for the K through 2, grades 2, and 21 through 25 for grades 3 through 6. When we look at class sizes below the range, we're seeing a slight increase in class sizes below. You know, as Matt had just shared, and kind of stepping off from that point, we need to continuously look at responsive decision-making regarding these classes, and certainly, there'll be some decisions we can make, and efficiencies we can make at the elementary level. One of the things that I do want to point out is that, in some cases, you might have, actually, this is the case in many, where the classes are below the range, you might have, for example, three 3rd grade classrooms, and those three 3rd grade classrooms might be 18, 18, and 19, which are below the range. But if you tried to combine those and take away a section, that would be overall 55, and you divide that in half, you'd have a class of 26, or I'm sorry, a class of 27 and a class of 28, which are then exceeding guidelines. And in many of those cases across the district, that's what we see, we see the 18s and 19s consistently, either in, you know, where Terrifil, where you might have two sections per grade, or you might have three sections per grade, but they're just on the cusp. We had a couple who were just on the cusp, and we had some students, you know, move out of the district, consequently, kids move in. So, it's just something that we have to take a look at and be responsive to when we make those tough decisions. Overall, you'll see, though, that the average class size for the district, again, the 20 for grades 3 through 6, and that is representative of those 18s and 19s that I just alluded to in those situations, but with the K through 2, we're right within the range at 19.3. Questions so far in the elementary class size report? Okay, I'm then going to turn it over to Brian and Jeff, who's going to speak specific to Henry James.
Hey, well, good evening, everybody, and as we take a look at the enrollment report for Henry James, it's just important to recognize the team model and how that plays out as we construct our schedule. It's important to recognize this, because there are some compromises and efficiencies when we talk about teaming, but we do believe that the value of teaming justifies some of those compromises. Essentially, the team model creates smaller learning communities for students at the middle level, it's an approach that we feel is developmentally appropriate. It allows teachers to have collaborative planning time in support of their students. It also means that because we create these sort of smaller groupings of students within our building, that those students travel together as a group throughout the day and throughout the schedule, and so the way that plays out over the course of the day does result in compromises sometimes. And so, just by the numbers and looking at the report, the total number of classes this year is 358, that's down 32 from last year. In the core academic areas, that represents a decrease of 12 classes. In our Unified Arts Rotation, which consists of art, technology, engineering, family, consumer science, and health, we see a decrease of 16 classes. In PER classes, our reduction of four. If you move to the right-hand column, the number of classes below range, you'll notice that the overall decrease was 16, and that was from 87 down to 71. This is really where we see evidence of approved efficiency, and so although we do recognize there are some compromises with the teaming model, we feel that our efforts over time have yielded an improvement in those numbers. When you look at the category of number of classes exceeding range, we see that that number increased by 21 classes from 11 to 32. In the core academic areas, we saw this number remain the same, and we really recognize this increase primarily in the Unified Arts Rotation classes. One of the reasons that plays out is because, as I mentioned, when students are grouped by teaming, they essentially travel throughout the day together, and so in the course of balancing out the schedule, you'll notice a very similar increase in the areas of art, family, consumer science, tech ed, and health. The only area in that four that you'll see variance is in technology education, and that's with the number of five. One of the reasons for that is because we created a new course last year, it was a year-long course in tech ed, and that would explain the difference there, but otherwise, you see a pretty equal growth of classes in that Unified Arts Rotation. So, just in closing, I mean, as you look at those numbers, you know, we continue to make efforts to make sure that our staffing is appropriate in accordance with the guidelines. You may recall that last year, we did make some responsible reductions in reallocation of staff in response to the current enrollment trends. However, we were able to do this without negatively impacting our teaming structure or the quality of programming at Henry James. or the quality of programming at Henry James. It was only a few years ago that Henry James had eight full teams, four in each grade level, and currently, we have the equivalent of 6.8 teams. Our scheduling priority is to ensure that the appropriate levels of staffing meet the needs of our enrollment without negatively impacting our programming, and we're going to continue to analyze the data as we look for additional efficiencies moving forward. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to...
It's going to be at 6.8 teams?
The equivalent of 6.8. And so the way that breaks out is currently in grade 7...
Doesn't make sense.
Sure, sure. How can you have...
I need a little more...
How can you have .8?
Like FTE.
So in grade 7, we have a team that's the equivalent of .6. And so what essentially that means is we have four academic teachers, just like any other team. They each teach three classes. And so that's the equivalent of .6.
Thank you.
And...
Okay. What was the new class in tech ed that...
So this was a course that was actually created last year. It was a year-long course in technology engineering, and its focus was really on engineering. In fact, we had a really great accomplishment last year. Our students did very well in a competition called C-Pinch. That's C-Pinch Engineering Competition. Our students placed nationally, and that was an outgrowth of that year-long course.
Very good.
And it's a feeder into programs at the high school, so it's a good, it's a nice...
It's a great connection with the high school curriculum.
Nice connection.
Absolutely.
They'll lead the way and stuff. Does that make sense?
Any additional questions for Brian? Okay, so Eileen provided not only the data, but some pictorial evidence regarding the high school. I'm sorry, Neil, did you...
Yeah, I'm going to lead into this one.
Oh, okay.
In terms of, in terms of the schedule work at the high school, what I would say is, as an opener, as Brian said, in terms of responsible reductions related to enrollment, the high school enrollment has decreased over the last couple of years, and we've had corresponding decreases in staffing. We had a bump a few years ago with the eight-period day, which this board will recall, but then since then, we've had reductions. So that's important to know. When this class size report, as Eileen will give you the details, our staffing is appropriate in terms of averages. When you look at the class size averages, they're all correct. And you're going to see some challenges in balancing classes, and that is our pictorial evidence of the challenge.
It's actually not even the whole board. That's half. It's impressive.
That's half the Schedule Board that exists in Eileen's office. That's the, that's the puzzle that gets put together each year. And one of the things I wanted to do in introducing Eileen is to say, the extra challenge that Eileen took on is that she picked it up midstream, because this year, it was started by Mr. Tranberg in the spring before his appointment in Avon. So to pick up the logic puzzle midstream and then to make it work is an even greater challenge. And Eileen does a tremendous job with the scheduling, but the complexities that she can talk about in terms of trying to embed collaborative time for teachers at the same time that you're balancing classes are extraordinary. So let her talk a little bit more about her work and about the class size report.
I would like to extend an invitation. Anybody that would like to come by my office anytime, we can talk a little bit more about the Schedule Board.
Eileen, can you move the microphone to... Thank you.
So really, anytime you'd like to stop by. And when you look at the board, every single thing that's on the board means something, whether it's a PLC meeting, a duty, a lab period, something like that. So it's, it's pretty complex. So just in terms of a summary, if you actually take a look down at the bottom in terms of the number of classes, while we had a slight decrease, it's a little difficult sometimes to compare from year to year. And the reason being is, for example, when we count courses, or not courses, but when we count actual classes, you count them individually. And it varies from year to year, how many quarter classes you're running in terms of financial literacy, how many semester classes you're running versus a year-long course. So in 2012, 13, you'll notice that there was a pretty big uptick in business. That coincides with the fact that we had the financial literacy requirement, graduation requirement, therefore requiring all of those quarter-long classes. Another thing I do want to point out is that this is the last graduating class that will graduate with 22 credits. So next year's class will be the first with 25. So it'll be really interesting to see its impact on enrollment. My guess is that you, you'll maintain, I think, more seniors in six periods a day versus five in order to meet that credit requirement. In terms of the number of classes exceeding and below, we're up a little bit in both areas in terms of exceeding and below, but if you actually go and look at the longer report that was given to you in your packet, you'll notice that the actual averages are within the range. One, another thing that I pointed out in the summary is that several of the classes that are below the range, 24 of them, or 11%, are from singleton courses. So when you start to get into some of the upper-level courses that you're offering, you have to make a decision of, is it okay to run smaller classes, or do you start cutting programs? And I feel like we have invested a lot of time, energy, and resources into many of these programs that, you know, you think about the biomedical, and we just put the new capstone class in last year. We have capstone classes now in the technology, the manufacturing. We have capstone classes in family consumer science as part of child development and culinary. And then you even talk about, then you go to all the languages and the other AP courses. I would say, too, that one of the effects you have when you do make cuts across the board, it's the challenge for the department supervisors sometimes where to actually place all the sections. So similar to the elementary schools, you make the choice, do I put an extra section in Algebra II versus Algebra I, and therefore, you know, sometimes class size suffers in one area or another. One, one course is going to end up maybe being a little lower, the other one will end up being a little bit higher. So those are just some of the tough calls that people have to make. And then the same thing when you're looking at courses. Take, for example, our BC Calculus, AP BC Calculus this year. We usually only run, run one section, and this year, we ran two. And you make the choice, do you run two sections at 37, 38, based on the initial request, or do you break it down to two sections that might then fall below the range, which is a much more appropriate class size? You know, 36 to 38 kids in one class is just way too much. So that really accounts for the differences. Again, the under-enrolled classes, many times they're singleton or what we call doubleton classes. You're only running two sections, and you have to make those, those tough choices.
Thanks, Eileen. Any specific questions or comments regarding the high school class size report?
Math classes. I know in the past, we've always concerned about enrollment. And no, we don't want 38 kids in a class, ever. Not in this district.
Right.
Not in any district. How are the math classes? I mean, how are their enrollment?
They're tight. And I think the other thing you're going to see next year is a bit of an uptick, because next year's the first year that we require the fourth year as a requirement.
Right.
So we actually had statistics this year, which was new, and we, that's very healthily enrolled, which is great. And so I'm, I'm very curious to see how it plays out, because I perceive that there will be a little bit of an uptick, especially in the area of math, because that fourth year is going to be required next year.
So the projections are one piece of this, but in terms of timeline, when we're really able to analyze it, I mean, Neil, you can take that. That's around February, right, when you do...
As you probably recall, since most of you have sent students through the high school, our course registration process happens in February, as may be a little different than when some of you had children through. We do it all online now. So we get the data pretty instantly when we open the window. And February vacation, which will now be our shorter version of it, is a time when we spend some, some time really digesting those numbers and coming back in March with a very clear staffing report of what is, what is needed. We can experience some changes from that. You make an initial call in February. One of the, one of the things that I think we need to do is leave ourselves some flexibility in the months after that if numbers do change. And we did experience that in a couple of the elective areas this year. Students will sign up with good intention that I want to take all these electives, and then they look at their overall schedule for the year, and I have driver's ed, and I have two sports, and maybe I won't take that class, and it comes off the schedule. Now, we've accounted for it, and, you know, being able to make those changes at a later time is something that Eileen and I have been thinking a lot about. How do you adjust on the fly like that in April, May, when decisions have become more clear?
And we were looking at the actual, the tally numbers all the way through May, and then the largest drop-off, drop-off comes basically between May and then the first day that you're rolling schedules out to students, which is about a week before. So there's definitely some transition that occurs over the summertime, so we're actually trying to, we've met already with regard to scheduling for next year. We've actually talked already about how to back up some of those timelines to better anticipate some of those shifts. So, and I, you know, I also would like to make a plug for a lot of the departments. They really work hard to keep their students, especially in the elective areas, and especially in some of those specialized classes. And the teachers take on that added responsibility of running two and three different types of classes during the same period. And that's very difficult to instruct that way, but they're willing to take that on. That happens a lot in art, in tech ed, in a few of the other areas. So I just wanted to kind of make that point, too, that we try to combine as much as we can without placing too much burden on the teacher and sacrificing instruction for kids as well.
So in conclusion, when you really look at the October 1 enrollment reports, as well as the class size reports, both at the elementary, middle, and high school, and in the era of declining enrollment, I mean, that's a fact, we have to take a look at that. I think it's going to be increasingly important to continue to look at these data and to look at where we can make efficiencies in our scheduling and our class sizes, again, without compromising program and really, overall, making responsive reductions accordingly. So more to come. We will be sending, we actually have sent our latest numbers to NESDEC, and they will be providing us with projections for the coming year, and we would like to bring those back to the board in November to share those with you.
And that's a report we had normally done in December, but we felt in terms of prep for the budget, it'd be easier to answer any questions you had upfront, or if there was any more information you wanted us to get from them, we'd have time to do that. So we'll do that report in November.
That's a good idea. That's a good idea, to look at that.
The small classes coming up are really, there's a lot to be aware of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you take some comments?
Yes, absolutely.
Just a general comment. You know, we're, it seems to me we're about halfway in, if I remember the numbers correctly, to this long-term decline in enrollment. You know, I think our enrollment's projected to drop to 3,600 or something like that over a period of time. Is that about right?
It's about right.
Yeah. So right now, we're roughly halfway into that. First of all, a great report, very concise. We appreciate that. One piece of data that strikes me here is that if you look at the number of classes that are exceeding...
Is that the high school, Mike?
Well, at any of them. At elementary, or the, pardon me, the number of class sizes below, that's what I meant. We're running about between 25 and, say, 40% of our classes are running below our recommended class size. I think that's a tough thing to explain to taxpayers. You know, everybody's paying attention to budget right now. So my, my encouragement to board members and administrators and everybody is, we've got to be open and transparent about this stuff and talk about it. You know, we're trying to manage our way down into these new enrollments. I think the dynamic you described, Sue, a minute ago about, you know, you don't lose big groups in one school and one grade level. You lose two here and two there. We've got to explain that to people and make sure everybody understands how this goes and that we are going to be tracking this and kind of moving our FTEs down and moving our classes down as we go. But it doesn't come, it tends to come in larger groups or larger lumps, if you will, than, than being able to just incrementally fine-tune it as you go down. You just don't get to do that. But I do think that's a number, if somebody's watching this at home, they're going to look at the number of class sizes exceeding and the number of class sizes below. Number of class sizes below is an overwhelming number. It's a big number. And I think we've got to do a good job of explaining to people that we're, we're on top of it. We're trying to do our best to manage our way down.
And I think...
And it's going to be a continuing focus for us.
It is. And I think to tie into that and bring back the work we did last year with facilities and be open to that, too, because our agreement was a three-year plan, but to come back on an annual basis and re-touch on that, knowing that these things shift.
Right.
So we'll certainly be doing that as well. And, you know, this was the year we transitioned the preschool operation to squadron line with the vision of bringing the entire operation there from Central. So we do have some increased enrollment in preschool. We'll have to look at that, but we'll share all that information for you. And maybe that leads to a potential switch of, do you take Latimer's mods before Central? I think we really have to have those conversations and vet that publicly so that people are aware that that planning's going on.
And some of the high school applications are important to recognize, because you've got 25 credits these kids have to have, and most of these credits are things that colleges are expecting. You know what I mean? So a lot of the changes that we've made are to better our children's preparation for college. You've got the language requirements that colleges are expecting, and those classes are a lot of classes that sometimes are full and sometimes aren't, but we have to offer them because colleges are looking for them. So, I mean, there are a lot of different pieces that are important that we, everyone needs to know the details, because it, looking at numbers doesn't necessarily tell the guts.
There's a larger number of core classes this year that are under the range, but if you look at the overall average, they're in the range. And some of that also has to do with the fact that we schedule our PLCs during the day.
Right.
So you start to limit the number of periods in which courses are offered. So what it does is when you have certain classes in one period, it kind of, it pushes, it forces kids into other periods. And so sometimes there are just certain periods that are very difficult to fill for certain courses because of what's pushing up against that.
And that's an interesting point. I know, Neil, you talked about that complexity when we started. When we moved that PLC from before the start of the day into the school, it's created another layer of planning for this master schedule.
So you have to, everybody that's in the PLC has to be off at the same time, and they're all teaching that same course, so it limits your ability to offer that course in a certain period. So it does create, you know, so things aren't necessarily as balanced as we would like them to be across the board.
Yeah. You know, I think it's also important to note that the year-over-year enrollment decline as a percentage of students is much greater at the elementary school. It's sort of twice what it is at Henry James and closer to three times what it is at the high school.
Correct.
And that's what we'd expect to see is, is this enrollment change kind of works, kind of works its way through our system. But I think, again, we've got to do the best job we can explaining to people that we're very aware of this, and we're doing everything we can to be on top of it.
Absolutely.
Because I think your point is extraordinarily well-taken, and it's where I think, for the purposes of this report, looking at those averages, which really say, have we staffed appropriately?
Right.
And the nuances of balancing the class master schedule are one thing, but have you overall staffed the, you know, pick any department, the math department? You talked about that. Is that appropriate? And I can, we go through a whole set of staffing meetings, and I could tell you that those level, we, we get it down to a section number. We have 72 sections of math this year, and that's an appropriate number. And I would want the public to know that we literally get it down to the math level of talking about how many course sections in each department are going to be allotted.
And that, in the planning process, the way you detail it out is easy information that we could share. I mean, it's just, you know, it's sections and how we arrive at FTE. It might be worth another layer of talking about how we arrive at those potential reductions by talking about how we actually staff. You know what I mean? We could give the whole picture of that.
Question. How about students that take classes in the summer? Are they figured into this? I mean, at one point...
No.
Do continuing education.
Right.
Right. That's an interesting point in terms of, are they figured into, say, if we're running wellness sections in the summer? We do account for that when we're figuring out, and we did have a .4 reduction in health and PE.
During the school year? Because they're taking during the summer.
If it's, I mean, it's in a few areas. It's...
It's the main area.
We have, the health and PE is now predictable, that you can get, you can get a couple of sections of summer PE wellness classes. The, I would now call the financial literacy predictable, that, you know, a section worth of kids are going to take it in the summer. The rest of it is like all your enrollment reports, a kid here, a kid there, not going to impact the overall landscape.
Right. Another question. How about some of the virtual classes? Are they, students that are taking some of those?
That is not accounted for in here. We did the switch over to Play-Doh this year, so, which we piloted this summer with a group of students, and we're actually working on entering more students into that Play-Doh program.
All right. So that Play-Doh is not accounted in here for...
No.
Core classes or any of that?
It's not a class size.
Right. Because they're very, it's individual students taking individual things.
That's right.
And you don't have a teacher...
There's not a full-time teacher. There's not a full-time teacher.
Right. That's right. So it would just be one student here, one student there, taking what happened in class.
I think it's something that we have to see how it evolves and what the potential is.
Well, that was my first question.
Continuing education, work with Dave Krom to hire a couple of staff members feeling like the kids who needed to take those courses for remediation credit kind of needed some monitoring. And so we opened a lab at the high school, I think from 8:30 to 12:00 every morning for four weeks. And these kids came in and did their online learning with two teachers staffed in the room and were extremely productive. And, and we had kids who had not met credits, meet them through the, we're using it as a remediation tool. Although then, we had kids, we also, within that same room, had kids who were starting a brand-new course and plowing through material at a much faster pace because they were taking it kind of beginning to end. So it's a very flexible program, and that's why when we looked at our online learning options, kind of studied it for about three or four months with the representatives and made the move from virtual high school to Play-Doh learning, just because of the flexibility it offers, that we felt the virtual high school did not.
And that'll be really important as we go to that 25-credit graduation requirement, because that, it's difficult to achieve. You really have to earn six and a half credits. And for students that struggle and need support, those kind of opportunities are really important for them.
So you will see those, more students increased in those programs.
Well, we'll have to see how it plays out. But certainly more to come. I'll be back next month to talk about the NESDEC projections for the following year and how that interplays with our discussion so far.
All righty.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Those are kindergarten information. Potential uptick.
It's encouraging.
It's exciting.
It's a little exciting. Encouraging.
All right. We appreciate it. Thank you. Informative October 1st report. We'll now move on to Exhibit 5, Capital Improvement Plan.
Burke is just going to frame just an initial, brief conversation and a review of the materials from last year, because we will be started with this kind of in a more official manner in the next month or so.
Burke? Okay. So we've got for you the roll-forward draft, as we, as we label it. If you've got the horizontal landscape page, you'll see that because our CIP is a six-year document, the new year is now blank. That's the FY 2020. And so there's no projects in there, because we've simply rolled forward those, those ones that were on last year for you to see, not touched anything to do with the placement of these previous projects. So the year that, that came off was just the squadron line boiler project. That was the only capital project that we had last year. So the, the unique thing about this schedule last year was that we had improved school security measures as a to-be-determined cost. And the timing on that was that we had had our capital budget process done in February of this, of this year, but the security audit wasn't, you know, wasn't finished until later in the spring. And there was a concern on the part of the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen that this to-be-determined number could be quite large. But we're happy to report that, based on the previous money that was authorized, $177,000 for the classroom locks project that the Board of Finance approved out of reserves earlier this year, is, is a figure that we could work with to meet these smaller project needs from the security audit. So because of our summer classroom lock project, which was, which we were able to do from last year's operating budget, next Tuesday at the Board of Finance meeting, I'll be asking for them to essentially say, that existing monies that you've put for school security, we would like to use it for some slightly different projects. There would be some, some more classroom locks, there'd be some more FOB access, more security camera areas. But we started with a pretty good foundation, so it's not like we have to do a great deal of work in that area. But it is an ongoing issue that we'll have for future years as we have to, as we maintain those systems. We also are able to, to now look at what the pricing is for some security film, which helps to harden the exterior doors that have lots of glass on them in all seven schools. So that's part of that number. And we're also looking, working closely with the police department to, to improve communications between, between our schools and the department. So we are pleased that that, that portion of it is now something we can define. And there's also other things on this schedule which we know relate to security, namely, we've had the Henry James renovation project, which includes moving the main office and the squadron line main office project, which is, which is again about the location of the main office being, you know, right in the, in the front, having a visible vantage point to those entering the building. And those projects have been on our schedule for five, six years in both of those cases. So that's, you know, that's the project year, FY 15. We see that the largest project there is the Henry James renovation project. And we also had the high school tennis court replacement project. Tomorrow, Brian and I will be, be meeting with the architects that we used to do the cost estimates for this Henry James project. And one of the things we'll be talking about is, you know, what would it look like if you broke out just the main office aspect of that? So that we can attempt to have a more detailed conversation about the school security aspects of both of these capital projects.
I think the other thing to think about as we work our way through is with squadron line similar project in that out year, do we look to try to pull that project up? As Burke referenced, keep the Henry James project whole or segment that with the front office? You know, what are our priorities collectively in how we address those needs?
So that's the quick overview. As you recall, last year, we came back at many, at many meetings and reviewed status of the capital improvement project plan and be doing that again. But this is our sort of first, first starting point, and we look forward to any of your comments or, or suggestions and how we should bring this forward.
I know you have this meeting with Brian, and I know in a, in a meeting I had with him, he talked about the possibility of maybe a walkthrough over at Henry James, inviting some board members over to kind of get the visual take of what he was thinking about with the project and with the, the front office in particular. So we may talk about that and put that offer out. So when we do get into conversation in more depth, we've all taken a field trip.
Possibly even have a meeting scheduled on that location, so that we can do the walkthrough beforehand, as we've done with facilities and enrollment.
I think that'd be a good idea. How many years? I'm glad to see Henry James renovation is coming up, moving forward from the back burner, slowly.
Nine years.
Nine years? Nine years. So absolutely, feels much longer.
It's been needed much longer.
Yes, absolutely. Any other questions?
Burke, just to be clear, on the 177, the request to the Board of Finance, it's, request to the Board of Finance is simply that the, to use the 177 that they approved to be spent for security purposes for security projects. We're not, we're not.
Different, right, for, for, not for the classroom lock project, which is what the estimate had been.
But to go for other security projects.
Finish up the details.
We were able to cover the cost of the locks within our operating.
And still end up with some money out of the, the security lock.
There are a couple of things that that could really take care of, make it all.
Yeah. It's, it's good to see that we're going to be able to do more of those projects, if they'll approve that.
And that, those projects are in line with the recommendations of our audit that we presented in, in the spring.
It was nice to see through the audit that we were in such good shape, comparable to some of our other locals. It's good.
Good. Any other questions? All right, more to come on that. All right, I think this brings us to the end of our very short meeting. Good time. Seeing no one else in public audience wishing to address the board, I just would like to put in a plug for SCTV. I usually do every meeting. We thank SCTV for their volunteerism in, in taping our, our meetings and also other programs and events that went at Sumeria Public Schools. So as always, I will put in the plug for SCTV for additional volunteers and also for donations.